Agenda for those wishing to participate in Spanish. La transmisión de audio en español está disponible y está incluida en nuestra agenda para aquellos que deseen participar en español. At this moment, we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
Which stands one nation.
Is a republic. Which stands one nation.
Thank you. City clerk, if you can do a wall call, please.
Yes, council member Daniel Damian.
Here.
Council member Monica Garcia.
Here.
Council member Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. At this point, we can move on to public communications. If you require translation services from Spanish to English, please state your request at the beginning of your comments. In accordance with the Brown Act, speakers may only comment on the agenda items during a special meeting. City clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor Greg Tuttle.
I'm going to.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to go ahead and refer to Deputy City Clerk, please.
Okay, go ahead, Chief Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. There was one caller, Mr. Greg Tuttle.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and try him now.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Greg Tuttle. This is Emmanuel Estrada, Mayor of Baldwin Park, and we are calling you for your three minutes for public communications.
Okay. Can you give me two seconds here to sit down?
Yeah, go ahead. Stop time, please.
Okay. Okay. I'm Greg Tuttle, a business owner from Baldwin Park. And I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor Estrada, for winning the election and hopefully we can move on to a good solid council now. And I also want to congratulate Danny Damian for council seat. Then I'll move on to what I want to say about the agenda. First of all, what I want to want to say with the new council in there, you're going to have an opportunity to help with the corruption and stuff. And the thing that we need to get involved in is first of all, the you have the weed people that are on the list there, all those addresses. We need to bring in the officer that was paid and trained for and sent to Colorado to learn all the stuff about the weed businesses to go and investigate all these addresses you have listed here. I guarantee you over half of these are already growing weed, which we already had one guy get full weed plants, a WR distributing that the council had to pull his license out. So we need to have an investigation done on that. I'm not happy with the police chief that we have currently. His lack of responses to people with emails, his lack of I'm getting more complaints with crime and more lackadaisical stuff of not handling crimes that are happening and keeping people updated with their complaints that they have. This is lack of going in and re- and enforcing with the officers to do their job. We used to have that, but we don't have that anymore. So I don't know if he's going to be a good choice for the the people to do. Also, with the you're having on the COVID thing. A lot of people don't understand that this is just a severe flu and you treat it as a flu. And we need to make sure that the people get educated that you can do this over the counter type stuff and do a lot of the COVID. Unless you have certain health risks that you need to be in the hospital with a doctor. But a lot of this is overblown. So I need, you need to educate the people that a lot of this can be treated with the flu. I had this back in February. And I treated it with the steroid pack, just like what Donald Trump did. And three days later, I was up and out of bed and working again. So we need to be careful on that. The other thing is, is your city attorney, you guys need to think quick and fast to get rid of. Not only did he have sanctions against himself for $30,000 for fraud. He's being investigated by the FBI. He's being investigated and a lawsuit is filed against by me and my attorney, Paul Cook. We also have
Your time is up.
We also waterboarded and has also filed charges that with corruption of paying off people.
Mr. Tuttle?
Are me?
Your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your commentary. We will definitely, obviously, always do to make sure we hear out the
Thank you.
Sorry, City Clerk, is there any more public communication at this time?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Without being said, we will close public communication at this point. I believe now next we have an update on the city COVID response, and I believe you can hand that over to Shannon and her staff.
Thank you, Mayor. And myself and staff did compile a report on what the city is doing in response to COVID. As you know, things are getting worse. The county has a new stay-at-home order. The county is asking support from the city council at their item tomorrow at the board meeting. So one I would ask is that the city council concur that the city would as a whole support that item at the board meeting. And then if that is the recommendation, then either the mayor or Mayor Pro Tem or staff could speak at that meeting. I have sent you all information in regards to that. In addition, the city, as I said, did send out a report on what's going on. This is a very unique emergency. As you know, in in many catastrophes, earthquake, fire, riots, there's a lead agency. So the lead agency here is the LA County Health Department. So the best thing that we can do is support the county health department and get the word out to our residents, which we have been doing every time there is a change in the health orders. Staff has been doing that on social media, billboards, the message boards, the marquees, and a number of ways, including code enforcement going out to businesses and handing out flyers to the businesses. So with that, if the council wants to give direction on the county agenda, or if there's any questions at this point or discussion, we can entertain that. Also, you know, my stealth, myself and staff are prepared to go over. It's quite a long list of things that the city's done since February, and we can outline some of those things. But I didn't want to get into that yet. It's a lot of detail and it has been sent to you all. So if you do want more information that, as you all know, the city was one of the first to implement COVID testing in our area, one of the first cities to implement that statewide. And that was completed. And in addition to that, we have city halls closed except by appointment only. We have sort of A and B shifts, A and B shifts to try to break up the occupancy at city hall in the spirit of the county order with people required to wear masks and actually, the social distancing is in play as well as the glass put up up around city hall. So the city is, we're doing what we can to educate the public and to protect the employees. And with that, I'll open it up if you wanted to discuss the, maybe discuss the county request first and then open it up to any other questions or ideas on the report of of city responses.
Yeah, so it seems that it's going to be at 9:30 in the morning. I don't know if maybe Mayor Pro Tem can be the one. I don't know if she's available for that time to make that call.
I am working at that time. Let me, I'm sure I can legalize schedule. Shannon, I'm, is that the agenda that you sent last night at 6:29? Which one was that?
Um, I may have sent it a couple times. I just reset it today, this afternoon of like 20, 10 minutes ago. And it has the call-in number and the participant code, and it has some talking points to to talk about and promote the safer-at-home order.
I see it. I see it. Okay.
So we
Sorry, Mayor, you won't be able to attend this meeting?
Yeah, I won't be able to unless maybe we can, can we maybe send a letter and, you know, on behalf of the city itself and then maybe, I don't know, Shannon or another council member that's available can can call in and and read it out.
What what is it exactly that that you're requesting we do, Shannon?
So the county board of supervisors has their item on their agenda tomorrow at 9:30. You've probably heard some cities are talking about challenging it or oppose it. The Board of Supervisors, Hilda Solis, is asking if a city representative would call in in support of the item and in support of the stay-at-home order.
And that's a, I can do that. If if Mayor is telling Mayor Pro Tem, I'll be lying over at work during the day. Flexibility, so I'll be able to make the call.
Yeah, that works. I mean, if you have time, it's not going to, you know, if it's not going to intrude in your schedule, then yeah, by all means, Councilmember Damian, you can go for it.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and put it on my calendar now for 9:30.
So so if the council, if there's no other discussion, then I'm assuming the council concurs with that. Because council member Damian will be speaking in support of the city council as a whole.
Shannon, can can you just make sure Councilmember Damian has the the talking points for tomorrow? So it's, you know, on point with the county's asking, excuse me, supervisor Hilda Solis's office is asking for?
Yes, I did send that to all five of you. I reset it about nine minute. Well, I think it was 5:21. So Councilmember Damian, if you need more information on that or you didn't get it, let me know.
Yeah, I have it here, Shannon. I'll go ahead and print it out and make sure that I have it for tomorrow's call.
And honestly, I'm just reading this right now. I had not seen it, so.
Okay, so I think we have resolved that the county meeting, correct?
Yes. So with that, if there's any other request for presentations by any of the departments, we have all the department's heads available. As I said, each one is taking their own role. Code enforcement's taking a lead role with the businesses as well as community development. Public Works is doing that through their staffing and the messaging boards. I know HR is doing that with the city staff. The police department is is supporting code enforcement and supporting the health department. They do respond to calls of gatherings and parties and break those up. They've also provided backup to the health department in shutting down at least one restaurant that was not in compliance with the the health orders.
I have a couple of questions, Shannon. Um, I I personally experienced and I've called the chief a few times of a few places, Zumba Places, to be exact, that are conducting, I haven't seen them this last two weekends, but we're conducting business on Saturdays because they know code enforcement is not out. Now, by the time the police got out there, which actually took a while, and I understand that wasn't an emergency, but but that by the time they got there, everything had stopped. And at one point, another time, they said they were actually having a fundraiser and selling food. So I don't know how that goes with our COVID laws. Having a fundraiser and selling food when it's not a restaurant, I think that shouldn't have been permitted. Correct me if I'm right, wrong or right? And the other thing is, how do we do it so that when we do see these facilities open and we know code enforcement is not on so that somebody cannot get out there quicker? Because these people need to know that these type of situations are with spreading is with spreading COVID. I know this community has a high amount of COVID cases. Another thing that I want to know from the chief is how are you working your schedules to make sure that our police officers are safe? So that in case you do get a case of one of our police officers being exposed or a few, that you have another group that's available to come in to take over while this police officer is quarantined. Do you have something going, a special schedule for our police department and our staff at the police department?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, council member. Yeah, very good questions, and I'll go ahead and take the first one and then like let the chief speak. So we do have available code enforcement on the weekends. We do have Jose Martinez, the supervisor, normally available for those type of things. So if you do see those type of things and it's off hours, feel free to contact me or Ben Martinez. And I will also just sort of reiterate with the chief and have reinforce with this. Brain pass. I will, I will just reiterate with the chief and have him and code enforcement staff touch bases and communicate again to make sure they're on on the same page to support each other. So if PD cannot get out there, it's an ongoing problem of someone we believe is trying to bypass the rules and and do it when code enforcement is is not there, we can make those arrangements to have code enforcement come in and look at them. Thank you.
I'm sorry, council member, a point well taken. And we do, at this point, we're still monitoring the the deployment needs. We have in the past had a reserve. We're looking to maybe revisit that again. Right now, everything staffing is 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 appropriate. The all the detectives that are here in in the building are separated as 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 directed. They, there is partitions, the Plexi class partitions are up. There's no more than one or two people in an office. And given the size of the office, some of the offices are rather large, and there's only two people inside and be here after the fact. I looked at the at the at the process and they're quite large offices and and they're and the social distancing is appropriate for their need or our needs. As far as dispatch or dispatch reports directly to the dispatch center, they're, they don't come in contact with any of the other officer officers or any of the personnel. So they're going directly to their office and and are allowed to go in there to do anything inside the office outside of a myself or a supervisor. But even then, it's very, very restricted. So we're we're good in where we're at right at this point. However, we're still monitoring every day to make sure that that if we start seeing a change in things, that we go back. I believe before I got here, there was a process where they were where they had officers stay at home and the ready reserve. And we're looking at that again, just in case we we have an uptick in 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 concerns. And but we're not waiting till that point, but we're continuing to monitoring that.
So because I know the cases have been continued to increase. When do you plan our, I guess it would be like a standard schedule. When do you plan on implementing this before we get to the point that you're going to have to force?
You know, I'm checking with Commander Hopperd and Commander Villable to check and see the where we're at in in our we do have some individuals who have been off due to personnel issues. And so again, that that also impacts our ability to deploy sufficient resources out of the field. You know, generally, we have between five to six officers during the day and maybe anywhere between six to eight officers at night. So that kind of limits our ability to deploy in all single man units. So again, that's that's an issue we have to be guarded by, make sure we have sufficient personnel out in the field at any given time, again, to to address those issues that you're concerned with as far as COVID and most and large parties and those situations and making sure that our weekend is covered. That when we do have those occasions where someone reports a large gathering, that we have sufficient sufficient officers to respond.
Okay, that that's my concern. You know, our police officers, they're out there getting exposed on a daily basis. And they can be exposed at any given time, and we don't know because they may not show symptoms. And now you have a group of people that possibly all get exposed. So I want to make sure that we do have another team that comes in and swaps, you know, are in for a week and then the other ones are off.
Correct.
So I want to make sure that's happening. I'm not the chief of police. Of course, I don't know your how to run scheduling, but I I know it can be done. So I appreciate that you're working on that to be able to protect our officers. Now, and I also want to make sure, I see the officers on the streets and I know they're wearing masks. I want to make sure that they have other appropriate gear, the mask, the gloves. I don't know if they were shields because at times, especially like if they're going to go break up a party, that they're wearing face shields because you don't know, people have been drinking, they may be out of control and may get in their faces and start screaming, and that's a potential right there. So if you can make sure they have all that in their vehicles and ready to go every day. I know they're disinfecting the cars for them, which is great. They're doing it every shift. So I just want to make sure they're being kept safe. The officers that are going out and everybody in your office. Thank you, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As far as the community, sorry, Shannon, if they were to see some I know they can call the police department. Do they have access to call code enforcement if they were to see a facility that's open when we shouldn't have been functioning like, you know, the Zumba classes and all of those places?
They do. And we also have a COVID hotline that is monitored, and that's monitored by Ben's staff. So that would also be a very quick way to get that information to Ben and his staff and code enforcement.
Is that COVID hotline on the marquees and all of that? To report?
It was at one time. We could put it up there and we could flash it on the banner again. We had it at the headlines for a while. It's dropped to the bottom of of things. But yeah, we can reinvigorate that again and get that hotline out there.
Yes, be only because everything has, it seems to have increased again. Do you have that number with you on top of your head or somewhere around there? If not, you can send it to me.
Yeah, we'll we'll send it out. Ben, if you could have that sent out to everybody and work with Manny to get that put out again on the banners and social media and the website and the and the marquees.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Okay, those are all my questions for now.
Chief.
Can I?
I can ask a question to the chief?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, do you currently have anyone's staff within the police department who has any type of emergency response management experience?
You know, I have to look at it and verify if there's anyone that has been trained in that aspect. I don't believe I do at this point, but I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, if you can, please, because I really want to start working on getting the emergency operation center to be up 24/7. So maybe if you can touch base with Shannon to see if you do have someone. If not, maybe we can look into how we can bring this emergency response team into play.
Okay, one of the things, you know, as far as the 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 center being up, it primarily is for like earthquakes, you know, fires, those kind of things where we're managing, trying to manage the the infrastructure of this of the city and making sure that we're trying to deal with those kind of things. So it's a little more difficult with this. This is a, you know, I believe in the past they had an officer assigned to this and he was monitoring different websites and those kind of things, but it was only a single officer. So again, we do have, I do have a sergeant in assigned to that, Sergeant Aguerta, and he's he's our EOC coordinator. And and he does do that. But as far as specific training, I'd have to really check and see to verify that we have anybody that has that specific training where it's emergency management.
We have, so currently Shannon is the one who's in contact with LA County Health, all these emergency units within the state.
So so we are part of what is called Area D with LA County. And Area D is this section of San Gabriel Valley and the county and all the cities that are in there. And is the county group that responds to any type of emergency. It's it's the coordinated response with the cities and the county. We are part of that. Basically, those messages go out to three-pronged. They go to myself. They go to Chief Lopez, and I believe they also go to Sergeant Huerta. So we're all monitoring those constantly and participating in that group. And hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, you guys are in constant contact with these groups then, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments on COVID?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Just, you know, and this one item is for the discussion of, you know, the entire council. You know, I'm not necessarily comfortable having the police department be the primary agency that's enforcing the stay-at-home order. Again, the police department does have several other items on their plate on a daily basis. However, I do see, you know, code enforcement being the primary agency that, you know, if residents contact the city or contact us, that they are the ones that go out and make these visits, at least during the weekdays and also during the weekends. Now, I do understand that, you know, code enforcement doesn't necessarily work 24 hours, you know, seven days a week, unlike police department. So I would really like for us to make sure that we instill a policy or we instill the practice that, you know, if a call comes in during normal weekend hours, weekday hours, that it goes first to our Ben's team, and they're the ones that go out and visit and, you know, inform our residents and or our businesses. And if it's something that's after hours, then at that point, you know, a police officer can go and, you know, visit a resident and, you know, again, remind them of of the situation that we're at task, but more importantly, of the current, you know, regional stay-at-home order. You know, again, you know, I don't want necessarily our residents to see our law enforcement agency be the ones that are at their house telling them that they have to disperse and so forth. Now, I know we've done this in the past on when there have been a few exceptions, when there was, you know, a large house fire, a large house party, excuse me, not fire, house party, about 30 or 40 people, people were bringing in their banda music and all that stuff when we first started in. Because otherwise, you know, our department's going to be, you know, inundated with calls that are coming in. The other thing is, I also want to understand, you know, where these calls are going to be going to. Are we going to call, you know, the non-emergency police department's telephone number to, you know, access this information and then have the dispatchers provide that to Ben's team during normal hours? But again, what happens during non, non, non-operating hours? So these are things that are gaps that I believe that exist, and I'd like for us as a whole to have that discussion tonight. Be so that way we give clear direction to our departments as to how we're moving forward with this new COVID restrictions. And I do have several other questions, but I don't mind pausing at this moment for that discussion, sir.
Okay. I don't know if any other council members had any comment on that.
I I could respond. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Shannon. You go first.
So and I think that's the way we are operating in practice, that code enforcement is handling things during normal business hours. Obviously, we're not there to answer the phone after hours, so those are going to PD. But I think we can clarify that a little bit, both internally and on our website by specifically stating, you know, during business hours versus after hours. So if the if the council supports that, we can make that clarification and both reinforce it internally and on our on our media and our website.
Thank you for that, Shannon.
All right, and then I think Councilmember Garcia had a comment on that.
Yes, thank you. Well, the way that I see this is, you know, we can look at a preventive approach and then an enforcement approach. And so I know that with this kind of round two of scaling back and putting in these restrictions from the county, this information is still being disseminated. This information is still being disseminated to the public. And so, taking a preventive approach. I would ask, you know, how are we communicating this information to our residents? So that we are supporting the county, not only, you know, um, in gesture. But that we are also. Taking a lead in disseminating the new restrictions. And, um, I know at the beginning of, of the pandemic. What we did early on was we had code, um, I'm sorry, I don't know if it was code enforcement, but community development. Was helping us to communicate with the businesses. And so I'd like to know if that is something that we can do. Um, I know we have also been working remotely, but I think for a preventative approach, it would be helpful. To communicate to the businesses exactly, you know, kind of what, what, what is the newest restriction? And this way it's very clear so that if they're not in compliance, then we can move forward with an enforcement. Um, I know there's a lot of confusion right now because there have been different orders that have come from the county. And so, that's why I think communicating, disseminating the information, taking a preventive approach. Um, is important along with, okay, if they don't comply, then, then we, then we take the enforcement actions. And I, I support. Uh, what Councilmember Paul Hernandez said about not only relying on the police department. Um, but really looking at community development too, um, you know, as far as how we can, how we can facilitate. That enforcement sometimes, um, you know, it could even be through conditions of approval or things like that. I don't know. So I think the community development, code enforcement, along with police department. Will be a, a better approach than relying solely on our police department, and that could be very taxing. I also want to mention that, um, early, at the beginning of the pandemic, we did talk about a policy. Let's say if there are parties and we are going to be getting into that, I mean, you know, it's the holiday season. So unfortunately, um, we will have people gathering and so. Earlier in the pandemic, we talked about what it was going to, um, like how we were going to encourage compliance through fines. And so Shannon, can you bring that back to the council and we can review it and see if it still makes sense? Um, in this round two, if you will, and see if we're, if we're still okay with that. Um, do you remember that, Shannon?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Um, and yes, on your comment with the community development department and their staff. Are still taking a lead role with the businesses, um, and as things change and they've changed. Um, you know, rather quickly, quickly over the last week, they are taking the, the lead role and notifying the businesses, starting with the major businesses and trickling down to the smaller ones. Um, yeah, as far as the fines, we did discuss that at one time. Um, what I would do is get with the police chief because most of, most of the parties are late night after hours and those are typically. Um, a police call if there's a large congregation of people. Um, so let me get with the chief and, and we will check that we may have, um, already the authority to issue those fines. Um, we can get that information to you. If the council wanted to look at increasing those fines or changing those. Um, you know, we can consider that, but let's do, let us do a little research on that, unless the chief knows off the top of his head. Um, um, but we can get that information back to you.
Okay, good, yeah, I, I think that, yeah, it is appropriate that community development is working with the businesses. Um, including the enforcement. And, um. As far as the parties, yeah, we did talk about what that was, what that would look like early in the pandemic, but what I would ask is. If you can bring that back to the council so that. You know, we can review it as a new council and see if we still think that that's appropriate or if we want to make any modifications to it. And, um, and then use it as a tool for enforcement with the police department. And that was specific to gatherings, um, parties. Uh, and then I would just say that, you know, any channels, any communication channels that we have, um, from the city, like you said, social media. I don't know, uh, what the status is of the Baldwin Park newsletter. But, um, you know, any way that we can communicate this and the urgency to our residents. Uh, I think it would be very appropriate.
Yes, thank you, and, um, we'll report back on the party issue. Um, and yes, we are trying to utilize, um, all. Social media, all outlets that are available to us. Uh, the billboards take a little bit of lead time to get the message out, but I think we're still working on those. Um, Ben and Manny can follow up on that. The newsletter, right now, we're only publishing. Um, every other month, so it's not always timely depending on when it's ready to come out, but, um. Uh, we can put general articles in there and everything else, um. On the other outlets.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Robby?
I think if we work with the school district, um, the parents are constantly checking the school district webpage and they're getting emails from the school district as well as from the teachers. So if we can have those notifications go out, Shannon, via school district as well, I think we can hit a lot of families that way.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think, and I, I think I've mentioned to Shannon, I think it's important. Yeah, that we take advantage of our, of our resources and our tools, and I, and I think we can use this as an opportunity to strengthen, uh, social, uh, the city's social media presence. Um, you know, I'd, uh. Uh, I think we can be a little bit clever with our, with our PSAs, you know, it's, it's, it's becoming alarming, I think, you know, I kind of did a, uh. An average estimate, I think we're maybe six percent. So if, if it continues to climb, you know, we're going to be able to say that. One at, one in ten people in the city are, uh, you know, are, it's a ten percent chance of you getting infected or so, so that is a little bit alarming. Uh, I don't know, we, maybe we can increase the presence. I don't know, we can put a sign out outside the city hall, uh, you know, make it so that. People see that city hall and, and the city is also doing their part and, and pushing that message. Uh, you know, in a, in approachable way, you know, we know that also, uh, what, uh, I think this week. The ICU capacity in SoCal dropped between, uh, below fifty percent, so, um, you know, it's, it is becoming a little bit alarming. It's gonna put people in. In, uh, in dire situations, it can, you know, lead to a medical debt, so we want to avoid a lot of that stuff. I think, uh, I think Paul's idea, uh, Councilmember Hernandez's idea. Is, is not a bad idea with, uh, you know, uh, maybe having code enforcement go out first so that we're not. Uh, you know, sending the, the police resources right away, also, you know, also considering that this is a very touchy subject. In a way, so I think that's a, a good approach. But I, I do want to see, uh, I would like to see a stronger presence for, uh, and a, and a stronger, uh. Stay coming out of a city hall through their so- social media channels as well, or maybe even the bus stops. Can we use the bus stops? I know some, sometimes they're like blank or things like that.
And it's always been my understanding that it's code enforcement going out. The, the times that I had called chief was because code enforcement at the time was not. Out and about, so we needed somebody out there because they were, uh, having a full-on Zumba class. It just so happened that when police got there. People were gone and they were selling food for fundraiser, which I believe that shouldn't be appropriate either, but we have been using code enforcement for the most part, not so much the police. The gatherings, uh, for the weekend parties, um. Usually that's, uh, late at night, like it was said, so that's why the police has gone out, but. I recall Monica, um, that there was going to be, and that's why it is a good idea, like you said, to bring it back to see what we have on there. That there was going to be a warning type of the police had to go out there once, it was going to be a warning and then. Citation following, so yes, Shannon, that's a good idea. Uh, Monica mentioned to bring it back so we can look at it and see what is that we had on there, please.
Yes, thank you, Alex. Thank you for reminding me, you're right, there was that warning, so thank you very much. Thanks, Alex, for reminding.
And I think by all means, if, uh, you know, if we, if somebody sends out code enforcement and, and, you know, the, the code enforcement officer doesn't feel comfortable maybe approaching that, that event. Then by all means, may, you know, we can, it can be a case-by-case thing. Um, also, I think this is a, uh, a good opportunity. I think one of the issues is that we're asking people to do something and we're not, uh. Helping them cope with the side effects, so we know, you know, staying at home and not having anything to do or, you know, financial stress, I think it is kind of taking a toll on our. On our mental health, you know, citywide without a doubt. Um, so I don't know if this is maybe, you know, an opportunity to partner with, with, uh. Health providers or, or some sort of nonprofit where we can, uh, you know, let people know that what they're going through is normal and kind of help them cope with the situation. I think, uh, you know. We should be trying to find some resources to help everybody.
Mayor? Um. Uh, is there any way that we can work with like the city channel or maybe the, uh, what is it, the spectrum channel or something that maybe they can help us? Uh, put some promotion out there, maybe kind of work as, uh, as a city. Some type of marketing campaign, like, you know, mask up or something, just to kind of, you know, get the word out there, you know, how. People are, you, you, the more you say it, the more they'll probably follow, uh, just kind of bounce ideas out there so that we can get people to really take this seriously.
Yeah, Shannon, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I think we do get airtime on the cable channel, um. Manny and Ben, let's get together on that. If we haven't given that to them already, let's get them our, our simple. Social media blasts, and I think they will scroll those, um, during downtimes. Um, we can also look at maybe doing. Um. A short film or something. We also probably can get information from the health department that we could sponsor to put on there.
And also, uh, may, maybe like on the social media, the Facebook, the Twitter and all those accounts, uh. Record messages from different council members, from the mayor, from the city staff, you know, reminding people. Of, uh, the safety precautions and, and maybe guiding them on where to go to, to get information for mental health on a regular basis. And I know we're always all sharing these pages, so the more we share it, then other people share it and we can get more information out there.
Yeah, those are, those are some great ideas. Is there any more comments regarding that, uh? The COVID, the COVID, uh, topic?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Hernandez, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, you know, again, uh, and this is for Ben and his staff, uh, you know, as we're going out and visiting all the big box stores. Um, in this next round, can we also please make sure that when we do visit, uh, the restaurants, uh, that we are providing to them, the information that the county has available. For the business grants, um, and I think it's called the open plate dinner or the meals on wheels. In which, uh, local restaurants, uh, can participate and cook, you know, uh, more meals for, uh, for individuals. Uh, that are delivered, uh, I believe here in, in our own city or surrounding cities. So instead of just telling them, you know, what the new order is, we're actually providing them, uh, uh, some additional resources for them. Um, and then the last item, uh, if we can, is can we, uh, if Ben, if you can give us a, just an update on the business and residential, uh, grants program, please?
Thank you, um, Mayor and City Council, and yes, I'd be happy to follow up on those items, uh, in providing resources. We're doing a lot of that. And we'll, we'll do our best to strengthen that, those efforts. Um, the update on the, um. Uh, the city initiated a small business grant program and a rental assistance grant program. Um, uh, you know, we're under a tight timeframe to, uh, implement these programs. Uh, we publicized it, we, uh. We, uh, obtained a list of, of since essentially interested people and businesses. Um, we've been working with that list, um, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of back and forth. Um, we're making progress, but you can hear it in my voice, it's. I'm under the pressure of a December thirtieth deadline to spend these funds from the CARE Act. So, um, it's one of those nail biters to see, you know, my goal is to. Assist the, the renters and the businesses as we propose. We have enough money for fifty-four businesses and forty-five, uh, households. So, uh, we're gonna do our best to meet that. We, we already have issued some checks to some businesses, um, about ten percent of the fifty-four. So we're making progress, um, but we're right in the middle of it and my staff and I were working very hard to get it done. And, um, uh, I should have a better update for you in another week or two. Uh, but, uh, my goal right now is to try to meet those numbers and spend all the funding. So that we can help the community.
That's great, maybe, and that's maybe something else that we can, uh, remind the, you know, the, the community of that there is grants available. And that there is, uh, funds to help them out, um, you know, during that time, so that we're not just, so that they don't just feel like we're asking them to do something and then, you know, kind of like, uh, letting them fend for themselves. So I, I think that's great that you brought that up.
Um, yeah, that's correct, Mr. Mayor and Council, and we do let them know also about the county program, for instance, that offers assistance, so we're, we're doing that as well.
And, and to, um, Ben, just so you know, I have had some of the businesses that applied. And they said you were, you have been very helpful and you have sent the information that the county's also sending. Um, so I know you've been busy, I know you've been extremely busy and you have been doing your best with. With the applicants, uh, and, and I know it's a lot of work, as I mentioned to you in, in the text, you know, when you get. Uh, information that we're going to be implementing those grants, by all means, I'm willing to go to the businesses and pass out flyers if need be to make sure. More people are informed or even to the apartments and, and we can get a group of volunteers to pass out the information and talk to people, so. They're aware and they're not thinking that we're not informing everybody, because I know there was some businesses that they had no idea this was going on. But I know you've done your best to do it, but if we can get volunteers to pass out flyers, uh, and do that, as we know ahead of time, let's try it. But thank you, Ben, for everything you and your team are doing.
All right, so I think at this point we are ready to move on to the.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You had mentioned something about, um, uh, trying to get as many resources as possible to get the word out. We do have a number of electronic billboards in the city, and in those electronic billboards, we also get free time on those. And so maybe we can reach out to our, our partners, uh, with the electronic billboards and get, uh, you know, phone numbers and information on the billboards about grants and things like that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think, uh, you know, everybody's passing through the billboard, so the billboards will, uh, will, uh. Help spread the word, not just here in the city, but all around the county, so I think that might be something with, uh, is that with, uh, you, Ben?
Yeah, Ben, Ben and Manny work on that together, um, and have contact with the billboards, um, designing the graphics and then getting it to them. Yeah, we can do that.
Great, okay, yeah, so let's get a, you know, let's get a, you know, let's get on that so that we can use every resource possible. We, you know, maybe we can even get, can, can we make it so that, you know, I don't know, the high school art kids can design a, something to put on the billboard and. That helps spread the word as well through the, through the younger channels.
No, we can, yeah, we can definitely ask the, uh, school district to, uh, help us on that, good idea.
Great, okay, so I think at this point we are ready to move on to the next presentation, so, uh. Was that, uh?
Councilmember Garcia.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
One last thing, I, I did want to ask Shannon to, uh, bring back the senior meal delivery program. Uh, either in December or in January so that we can review, you know, where we are. I know we had approved. The meal deliveries through, I believe it was January of twenty-twenty-one. And so I think we're gonna want to discuss that because we're still in this pandemic and, um, just revisit it, review it. And then project, you know, how much longer the seniors may need the service. And, uh, where, where we might pull some funds for that. So Shannon, can you bring that back to us in the, in the near future? December, January?
Yes, and we have that on our radar. Um, it looks like we will have some of the food basket funding left over to be able to carry the senior program. Probably to get us to January or February, and yes, we have that on our radar to bring that back to you about that, uh, around that timeline.
Okay, yeah, because that will definitely be part of the COVID response, um. Especially if I know that the current county order is through December. But if we're still looking at restrictions and stay-at-home, you know, we definitely want to ex, look at extending that. Um, perhaps into the first quarter, through the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one, so. We'll review it though, thank you.
We will bring that back. The other thing is that, um, you may not all know that we planned on. Um, going back to enforcing the no parking on street sweeping day. We had talked about that a month or two ago. We're looking at doing that in January, so we're recommending at this time. Um, we also suspend that maybe indefinitely for another month or two into, uh, the year of twenty-twenty-one. It, it is a little concerning because I walked some of the streets today and, and it's, you know, it's s- s- some of the dirt's piling up. Um, so I, I will talk to Public Works, um, they, they do go out and sweep, but the cars aren't required to move, so. If cars are parked there for a long period of time, then the area doesn't get swept. So if cars are parked there for a long period of time, then the area doesn't get swept. But I do recommend, you know, to continue with the past practice of suspending the citations into the first of the year.
And Shannon, yes, I agree with you. I think we've discussed this before. Maybe that's another message that we can send out via social media, remind the residents that yes, there, there won't be any citations. However, if they have room to move their cars in on street sweeping day, to please do so, that way we can get through the streets and clean them up, let them know how important it is that, that we keep those streets clean, especially with the rain coming, because now they're gonna clog up our gutters. So that's other information we can put on social media, so they can try to bring their cars in.
Yeah, definitely. That will be a good message. Sam, I'll have, I'll have Sam and Manny get together on that message because you're right, all that stuff actually ends up in the ocean if we, if we let it build up. So we will put out some messages, asking people to voluntarily move their cars so we can help keep the rivers and oceans clean.
Thank you.
Great, that's good. Okay, so I think at this point for sure, we are, we are ready to move on to the next topic and I believe Ben Martinez will talk to us about the, the how, an update on the housing law.
Thank you, Ben, you're, you're on mute, it looks like.
Okay, honorable Mayor and City Council members, I'll, I'll speak a little, but I'm also looking for your direction on, on what you would like to talk about, you know, tonight regarding housing laws. But I will, and I, we have our city attorney's office here, Robert Tafoya and Anthony Willoughby to assist. But I will just make these opening comments and then, and then talk about a few items and then, and then seek your input and guidance on what else you would like to talk about. But I will, I will say that in general, housing laws that are coming down from the state level slowed in 2020 due to COVID. What we're hearing generally is that a lot of the laws that were being discussed at the state level, will, a lot of those discussions will presume in the, in the following year, 2021. And so we can expect a lot of activity and laws under consideration. We usually follow those discussions, those, those laws and the creation of those laws and bills through the California League of Cities are one of our partners who monitors, you know, those situations. So we'll, we'll continue to do that, but we did, they essentially told us that, again, a lot of the activity, housing laws, activity slowed down this year due to the COVID distraction and so forth, but we can, we're assuming that a lot of that will pick up in the new year. There, there were a number of laws regarding this accessory. I, I'm not going to go into detail because it would take too much time, but there were discussions and ongoing measures regarding accessory dwelling, dwelling units, ADUs, which is very important and a lot of our residents are, are taking advantage of accessory dwelling units. It's a, it's a good way to invest in your property. It's a good way to provide affordable housing. And so this is something that a lot of people are taking advantage of, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. If you don't know about what an ADU is and you want to get informa, more information, please, please contact the community development department and the planning division. We'd be happy to, to help you understand what, what, what you can do with your property if it's large enough for an ADU. There are a number of other items, you know, related to homelessness and shelters. I wanted to mention, there's some other items related to annual reporting of planning and zoning and so forth, pretty, pretty dry legislative stuff. But one of the, the items that perhaps you want us to, to discuss more tonight is AB 3088, the tenancy rental payment default mortgage forbearance state of emergency COVID-19 bill that was, that was passed and adopted, AB 3088. And essentially that provided additional protections in a moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent and, and provided, you know, more, more protections to, more protections and more guidance to tenants and landlords. Now, we know that we at the local level have passed several emergency declarations and we have sent, we have passed laws that protect tenants from, from, you know, COVID evictions, COVID-related evictions. So perhaps at this point, because I, I think this is probably one of the more, 3088 is probably one of the more critical items to, for our public to know about. I can ask either from our legal counsel, I'll let it be whether Robert Tafoya or Anthony Willoughby to just briefly comment on AB 3088 and how it relates to the laws that we've already adopted locally and, and how those, how those work together. So could I, could I, could I please have that brief comment at this point?
Okay, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll start off and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Willoughby as, as it relates to AB 3088. As Mr. Martinez mentioned, the city has already adopted a number of resolutions and emergency orders to protect your residents and your renters. We do have a bar on any evictions at this time, COVID-related or not. There's no evictions that are allowed at this point in time. We, the city council has also adopted resolutions and emergency ordinances related to rental increases and what people can and can't do. There are no rental increases going on right now that I know of. And so generally speaking, the council has passed a number of different ordinances, emergency ordinance, orders and resolutions that do protect all of the renters from eviction and things of that nature. But as more specifically as to AB 3088, Mr. Willoughby, if you have a moment, could you please comment to, on that to the city council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. But so 3088 sort of established a baseline of protections for tenants. It allowed them the ability to pay part of their rent in order to maintain their, their tenancy. Our local protections offer even greater protections. However, in getting those greater protections, it puts the emphasis on the tenant to provide declarations to their landlord stating the reason why they can't pay rent and why the additional protection should apply. 3088, since it offers less than our local ones, actually puts the emphasis on the landlord to provide notice to the tenant and to give the tenant the opportunity to respond. The way these interact is that they offer a wide range of possibilities to protect tenants to avoid further housing displacement in the city. In addition to these two, there are also federal protections. The federal protections were issued by the CDC. Not a lot of detail has come out from the federal government as far as how that's supposed to be implemented or what's supposed to happen, but it is something where they can provide a declaration, tenants can provide a declaration to the CDC stating their reasons why they cannot pay rent. And from there, the CDC can issue something to the landlord.
Thank you, Mr. Willoughby. Lastly, I just wanted to mention to you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, that while this does protect from evictions and even if they're not paying rent, they do, it is encouraged to pay some rent, it does not waive the rent. The rent still is owed and the rent is still going to have to be paid at some point in time. And so as you can imagine, there may be a lot of people come January, February, March, April, or whenever these orders are lifted, that are going to owe a lot of money to their landlords and going to be no longer protected from these types of evictions. And so that might be something that the, the council may want to consider as well.
Robert, is that, sorry, something that, is the rent going to be due immediately once this is done?
It is my understanding that the laws that have been suspended regarding eviction will all come into play. And so in other words, it's not going to be a change in the law. If you're, if you owe money and the landlord demands that it gets paid and you don't pay, then they could begin eviction proceedings right away. There's what's called a three-day notice to pay or quit. So if somebody owes money and the landlord says, you need to pay me now, they give, they can give them literally three days to pay up what they owe or to quit, move out. If they don't move out, then the landlord can go into, into court and there is an expedited process where landlords, you know, it doesn't take a year like a regular lawsuit or two years like a regular lawsuit. Those are fast-tracked. So yes, that, the, the laws that used to exist that have been suspended will come right back into effect and people could be evicted very, very quickly.
Is there anything we can do as a city so they get more than 30 days on notice? Because to find a place in, I mean, three days, to find a place in three days, it's unreal.
It would be.
Can we do something?
I would imagine that many landlords will work with their tenants because they realize they can't pay in three days. But I do also imagine that there's going to be some cases where they are going to demand that they pay right away or move within three days. So I would suggest if the, if it is the council's pleasure, that we have some kind of study session between now and, you know, January or February to start to talk about these things and try to understand what, if any, options we have available to assist renters when, when this, when this, when this crisis comes to pass.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council, I have a, are you done?
I was just going to say, I would like to have that study session to look further into, you know, providing these renters more than three days to move out because a lot of them won't have the money because they've been out of work. So go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Councilmember. Robert, just for clarification, you know, it's so, you know, so the public understands, you know, how our ordinance works. Currently, the, our ordinance, the way, the way we have it is we provide protection for our tenants for up to six months after we end our emergency order. Is that correct?
That's my understanding with our ordinance, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. So again, for protecting our, our tenants, this doesn't necessarily mean that even though the state's order, this is the first time I've heard of 3088, so I don't know when that expires or kicks in, or I haven't seen the document. So if you can share that with us, that would be great at a later time. But, but if the state's order or even the county's order goes back, our local ordinance that we have, the emergency proclamation and the, the supplemental declaration that we have, that, that provides the tenant's protections, that stays intact until the council and/or the city manager removes that. Is that correct?
That is correct. And one, why I said that this may turn into a little bit of a crisis is because a lot of people don't know that and the landlords, many people, you know, will not know that and they'll believe that they can go right in and do their thing.
Right. So with that said, it's a, it's, you know, it's upon us to make sure that, you know, through Ben's shop, once again, because it's not the first time Ben and I and others have had this conversation with, you know, landlords trying to evict individuals, that this does provide, that we, you know, again, send a, a notice of some sort, mail to them, to the property owners or whoever we have on record, making them aware of, you know, what's happening and what our current ordinance is. Because I don't believe, I could be wrong, but the AB 3088 and along with our ordinance, again, as you stated, Robert, doesn't suspend the rent that's owed, it's just in our ordinance, it provides up to six months for a tenant to pay that back. And I do hope, I do hope that, you know, the landlords would work with their tenants to make that even longer or whatever the case may be. But those are, you know, a little of the more details that we can discuss in our next study session. But just for clarification, so people understand what type of protection they have between now, even January and every, and even February, because I don't suspect, I don't suspect us removing our emergency declaration within the first quarter. So just to provide relief and, you know, some facts for our, for all of us and more importantly, our tenants.
Right, and we need to be prepared to make sure that the, the owners know that they can't just evict our, our tenants or their tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Were you going to say something, Robert?
I was only going to say that the council and the city, they have to follow state law, of course, but you can, and the council has made things even more advantageous to the renters than the state. So we can do more, we just can't do less. And in this case, the city council has done more than actually what the state is doing at this time.
Okay, great, yeah. So that's, that's, that was one of the things that worried me that, you know, it's a little bit unclear to everybody and, you know, we don't want to act too late and then, you know, if we act in February, it might be too late for those that, you know, got evicted in January, you know, without cause or, you know, without justification. So I think that's also something that we should, this is kind of another announcement we should be trying to send out to everybody, you know, remind everybody that there is a housing, that, that there is housing ordinances in Ballpark and that, you know, maybe just try to make it easy to understand and maybe in multiple languages so that everybody can kind of see, you know, maybe like quick fact, a quick fact list to remind everybody that there is rent control, that there is moratorium, that there is protections for, for, for our residents.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had a question. When do we want to have this hearing? Probably about mid-January? Our study session?
Study session? Yeah, probably the second meeting in January, I would recommend.
Just, I'm not, I just want to plan, thank you.
And then I think Ben also was going to talk about an upcoming joint meeting with the planning commission and the city council. I don't know if, if we're done with the rent control issue, he could talk about that. That involves housing and the housing plan and the, the general plan and the housing element.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add one, one item for Ben to study up on along with Robert?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben and Robert, you know, the one concern that I think all of us will have is, you know, even though our ordinance does protect people from being evicted out of their home, even after six months, the biggest concern that I have when it comes to this type of issue is, as I understand it, but if we can, you know, be prepared when we come to, you know, the January's meeting is, a landlord will be able to sue a tenant for non-payment. And that's something in which they can then be able to garnish their wages and do all of that nasty work if, if a landlord chooses that route versus just straight eviction. So if we can just make sure that, you know, we study that and we have some concepts and I have some ideas to assist our, our tenants. Because again, if there's someone who currently is protected under the COVID protections that we have, it's because they've either were sick, they lost hours, or they lost their jobs. So it's not something that's any of their faults, but it's something that we need to be mindful of and see how we can protect them. It may, we may not be able to, but at least if we could have that discussion and look into that as, you know, as landlords prepare, not necessarily for the evictions, but for the lawsuits that will come directly to them. So if we could just talk about that in our, in our study session, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, I will note that to make sure that we have some information for the city council in our study session. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Ben if in preparation for the meeting that we just talked about, that may, may happen in January and that we'll speak to like the rental assistance program and everything that the city is doing to help our residents. Can you, Ben, can you look into the funding and see if, I, I think I heard you say that the current rental assistance program, the, the funding will be available through December 30th? And then if I understand that correctly, is there a second route or are there other grant monies that we can be applying for in anticipation of what we, what we seek? uh, in anticipation of what we, what we see coming? Um, you know, where, where renters will really need that assistance? So do you know if there's going to be a second round of funding through the stimulus or anything like that?
Oh, yes, I will definitely look, um, Councilmember Garcia, I'll definitely look into that question. I can tell you, uh, briefly tonight that we do, we're hoping for more CARES Act money, right? We're hoping for another second wave of stimulus. And then number two is HUD directly through, HUD is also providing CARES Act money through, through, uh, that department, the federal department. So we also have funding, um, coming through them. So we're going to monitor those and other resources and I can look into that some more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, announce that the, the joint meeting that Shannon mentioned, you're, you're on mute.
No worries. Go ahead. Uh, let us know about the meeting.
Thank you. This is a very important meeting that's housing related. Um, and it's coming up on January 27th at 5:00 PM. It's going to be a joint Planning Commission and City Council hearing regarding the updating of our housing element. And just very quickly, we'll talk about it more then, but our housing element is a very important document that is, uh, only, um, uh, updated about every eight years or so. It's a very important document. If we don't update our housing element, we run into all kinds of problems with the state. We can't apply for grants. We can't implement essentially a lot of our affordable housing programs and activities and, and chasing grants and things like that. So if, uh, housing element is a great time for all of us to get together again on January 27th at 5:00 PM um, and talk about, um, our housing needs and where we stand and where we should go in the future. What kinds of programs should we create and, and what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? Discuss all those things. So it's a, it's an important meeting. We've hired a very good consultant that's helping us through this process and we'll have everything ready for that, for that day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to the housing meeting, of course, and I'm sure a lot of us do as well. So I think at this point, we're, we're done with presentations. Um, so I don't think anybody else has any more comments to make. So I believe at this point, we will recess to, uh, a closed session at this, at this time.
Thank you. So yes, everybody involved in that would need to sign out and then, uh, log into the, uh, closed session meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Mark, you still awake?
I'm still awake.
Oh man.
Hey there's gonna be more items, you guys are, you guys got lucky today, am I right Shannon?
Yup.
So.
I'm skipping dinner, straight to bed, I had an apple, that seemed up, holy breakfast.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's here, Mark, are we live on YouTube?
Yes, we are.
Okay, you have the floor Mayor.
Thank you, so we are back from our closed session and there is nothing, there was no action taken, so nothing to report. At this me, at this time I moved to adjourn the meeting, any seconds?
Second.
Great, no objections? Great, so we moved to adjourn, thank you everybody.
Have a good night everyone.
Thank you.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Bye.
Goodnight, thank you.